Welcome, everyone. I'm calling this meeting to order at 5:05. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on ancient, under God, in his honor with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get a roll call for attendance?
Mr. Gomez Pereira will be a little late today. Ms. Alfaro? Ms. Hernandez?
Present.
Mr. Oregan?
Present.
Ms. Covas Caraballo?
Present.
Ms. Valderas?
Present.
Dr. Neville?
Present.
Ms. Enriquez? And Ms. Cabral is absent today. That's seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Thank you. We'll move on to new business. Consideration and action to vote on the collaborative collective bargaining agreement between the Chelsea School Committee and the Chelsea Teachers Union Clerical Unit for the period of July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2027. The contract is subject to ratification by the Chelsea School Committee and Chelsea Teachers Union. Can I get a roll call? Christine? Lee, would you like to come up and do your presentation for this section? Thank you. I'm sorry, we'll do the roll call after.
Good evenings, School Committee. I am happy to present our contract to you. That is a tentative agreement, and if you have any questions after this presentation, happy to answer any questions. These are tentative agreements for the CTU Teachers Unit, the Paraprofessional Unit, and the Clerical Unit. So just a little timeline of the journey that we've been on the last year. We began in February of this year on the 12th. We went through a series of meetings throughout the year, as you can see here. And finally, on December 11th, we had a tentative agreement, which I'm happy to present to you today, but it was a lot of collaboration, a lot of work. Thank you to Chair Anna Hernandez and Dr. Bada for leading this very important contract, but it was quite a long road, but we're happy to be here today. The team that worked together on this contract was led by Anna Hernandez and Dr. Bada. Rebecca Bryant was our legal counsel and lead negotiator. We had Nate Myers, Jackie Baviera Maloney, who was our former principal, and Nate Myers is our lead principal and currently the principal of the Wright Wright School, Middle School. Myself and Dr. Jennings, Malika Alshon, Jerry McHugh, former executive director, Monica Lamboy, and Michael Sullivan. So we worked hard together. We almost, we kind of joked, you know, we're going to miss some of the times that we've had together, but we're also very happy to have settled this contract. The guiding negotiating principles that we adhered to as we discussed many different topics with our teachers' union are as follows. Number one, to always do what is in the best interest of our students, students first. To deepen and extend the culture of care to students and to all adults who work in our schools and ensure that they know we value each of them at every stage of their career in life because we do value our staff. We also sought to reduce turnover by incentivizing reasons for staff to make a career in Chelsea. We want the, we want to attract great, great hires, and we also want to reduce anything in our contract that might prohibit people from staying. And lastly, we wanted to make sure that we make salary increases that are fiscally responsible and prudent within the limited resources that we do have. And so, as mentioned before, we have the educator para and clerk units. The contract duration is from July 2024, which we will backdate until June 30th, 2027, and I'm going to kind of go over a few language changes that we had agreed upon. First of all, highlights of the contract as it relates to wage, wages. We offered for all three units a 13% wage increase over the duration of the contract. So the first year is a 3%, the second year is a 5%, and the following years is 5%. We also offered for our paraprofessional an additional differential adjustment to their base salary. We wanted to make sure that we are providing a salary for our paras to really be the pipeline of educators for our teachers. We felt that that was very important. So this current year, there will be a $3,500 differential. Next year will be a $2,000 differential, and the following year after that will be a $1,500 differential. For the clerical unit, we added two additional steps, steps four and five, to the pay schedule because we have a lot of veteran clerks and we, we wanted to recognize their commitment to Chelsea. In addition, we offered a $1,000 differential to their base pay and another $1,000 the following year. And so, we are really proud of the budget. We have stretched as much as possible, and so we're, we're happy to be able to offer this financial package to, to our educators. Some, one of the features of our contract are expanded leave policies. We wanted to make sure that we are providing a leave package for parents, moms and dads, families who are trying to start their families or expand their families. And, and so we did align our language to the Massachusetts Parental Leave Act and also FMLA. We will be offering six fully paid weeks of maternity and paternity, starting in 2025, July 1st, 2025. For this year, we will be offering three weeks for anyone who is currently on a leave upon ratification. This is a very, there's, this is a monumental thing that Chelsea is doing because many districts across the state have offered some benefits, but Chelsea is definitely one of the front runners to providing this kind of benefit to our educators. And this is something that Dr. Bada was also very passionate about, and so we, we hope that our educators are able to utilize this benefit. We have also offered an additional sick days to care for a family member. Prior to this contract, it was, you could use up to 15 days of your own sick time to care for a family member under FMLA, but now we are allowing for an additional 45 days. And lastly, we have expanded the use of the sick bank. Prior to this contract, the sick bank was only for the individual staff member, but now we have expanded it to if they need to care for an immediate family member. Some additional highlights in the agreement. We, there are some provisions to, that will support professional development opportunities and enhance working conditions and foster a positive and collaborative school culture. We're also happy to provide a $1,000 annual stipend for any staff member who goes through a certification process for being bilingual or belligerent, and so that's something we are developing, but that will be an extra stipend that is offered to certified individuals. We are also increasing longevity bonuses across all units, and we are also excited to provide a step increase for any CHS graduate. So anyone who has graduated from Chelsea High School and want to return, you will get a step increase, and so spread the word. We would love to have Chelsea folks come back and educate our students. A few additional highlights, our educator pay rates did increase the hourly rates, and we are going to be piloting a class size program, so that will be in effect come July 1st, 2025. Clerks, we wanted to encourage them to go back to school and pursue their educational degrees, and so we have increased the cap for the clerks to $10,000 annually. So in summary, we do believe that these contracts reflect a shared vision of the future of Chelsea Public Schools. We are committed to our students and also creating a place where staff want to come and teach our students and be happy because we believe that happy staff, happy students, happy students, happy staff. And so we're really proud of the work that we've done, and we, you know, this little student gentleman is giving us a thumbs up that we got it done, and so we're very happy about that. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
Just quickly, just quickly, I was wondering if you can tell us a little bit about the pilot program for class caps? I'm curious to know what that looks like.
Sure. And Dr. Bada, feel free to weigh in. Essentially, we have offered, let me just pull up the class caps. So as you know, we are constrained by land in Chelsea, and so we're not able to do a pure class size cap. And so what we did do was we have a set number of students that different grade level of teachers can have in their classroom, and once they reach that point, there are a number of steps that they can do. So one of the steps is first discuss with your principal about the class sizes, because sometimes it might be one student over, it might not be a huge adjustment, and so it's a simple reassignment of students. If at the school level, the teacher and the principal are not able to resolve the issue, then they can bring it up to the superintendent level and we can discuss some different options. And so we wanted to see, you know, what the issue was, because when we looked at our class sizes, for the most part, there is, there are two adults in almost every classroom, which per, you know, the ratio between students and teachers is actually quite small compared to other districts, and we, you know, we understand that sometimes there might be class sizes that are larger. One feature of the class sizes is at the high school level, we kept it at 140 students total, and so we understand that some classes might be larger, some might be smaller, particularly we know that the AP classes are in very high demand, which is great, but we don't have, you know, all the teachers that we would love to have to teach those classes, so we understand that there will be some larger classes in some sections, but total, we, we do believe that we can adhere to that, that range. So that's a little bit about, that's a little, you know, hopefully that helps, help you understand the, what we're trying to achieve, which is ultimately a conversation, because our intent is to make sure the, the job is sustainable.
I just wanted to let you know that I'm very happy that, I mean, we can do those adjustments. I know that you say we, if the teachers are happy, you know, everybody's happy, and I think the, the value of, you know, the, the teachers and the students are priority, and I think, you know, it's, it was a little hard, but I mean, it's, it's great that everybody is agreement. Thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
I just want to say thank you for the presentation. As far as the numbers and the class sizes, we've had the discussion before and in other meetings as well, I just want to say, while in some cases, yes, we don't always get to the class sizes, and I've, I've mentioned this myself, sometimes it just takes, you know, like, like you mentioned, just the pivot between the classes because we have to get a student assessed, sometimes the student is only there for a short period of time, but I've mentioned this myself. As a parent, I know the difference that even with two educators and sometimes the additional support staff, that having an extra student, if it does become a situation where we do need extra help for one or two students, it can cause a little bit of extra class time taken away from the, the greater number. So what I would like to see going forward is more communication before we have the negotiations. A lot of the information that was presented during the times in the meetings was information that I, in, in most cases, I would hope is presented to, you know, supervisor or someone ahead of time, not just in a, a contract agreement or something along those lines, because as you said, happy student, happy, happy teacher, happy student. So I'm hoping that those conversations are taken behind, behind the scenes prior to a contract agreement, in theory, right? So thank you so much for all of the time that you guys took. There were multiple meetings besides the ones that you guys were having, so there was a lot of collaboration. Thank you for that. Thank you for, as well for you, for stepping in and also being here as well today. For the rest of my colleagues, thanks for all of the perspectives. Some of them were very different, but I think overall, we, we had a lot of vibrant conversations. Veronica, you always bring your energy, your wisdom to the table, so I appreciate that as well, but we did it for the district, and I'm very, very happy that we could just come to something that is both equitable for our district, the students, very forward and leading and paving the way. So I am comfortable with what we're deciding, and I think it's, it's a step in the right direction. So thank you for listening and hearing all of us out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christine, for the presentation, and also at the same time, I just want to commend the team efforts, because this is, even though it took some time, eventually everybody is, is accomplished what was expect to, to be happen, and this is something that I like, everybody is pleased, and hopefully in the future, we continue working as, as a team, because the team effort is the most important in order to accomplish victory in, in some kind of issues or, like in contract, like this situation. So thank you so much to all the teams that are working this contract.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Christine. Okay, we'll move on to the roll call. Vero?
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Covas Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. Valderas?
Yes.
Dr. Neville?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez? Mr. Maltese?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and three absent.
Seven in the affirmative and three absent. Motion carries. Consideration and action to vote on the collective bargaining agreement between the Chelsea School Committee and the Chelsea Teachers Union Paraprofessional Unit for the period of July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2027. Roll call?
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Covas Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. Valderas?
Yes.
Dr. Neville?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez? Mr. Maltese?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and three absent.
Seven in the affirmative, three absent. Motion carries. Next item, consideration and action to vote on the collective bargaining agreement between the Chelsea School Committee and Chelsea Teachers Union, Teacher Unit for the period of July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2027. Roll call?
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Covas Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. Valderas?
Yes.
Dr. Neville?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez? Mr. Maltese?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and three absent.
Seven in the affirmative, three absent. Motion carries. Next item is consideration and action to accept the terms and, and conditions in the employment contract for the Chief Financial and Operation Officer, Billy Joe Turner. Roll call?
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Covas Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. Valderas?
Yes.
Dr. Neville?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez? That's six in the affirmative and three absent.
Six in the affirmative, three absent. Six in the affirmative, three absent. Motion carries. With this, does anybody have any comments? Dr. Abada?
I would just like to say thank you to everyone, our School Committee, for your support during negotiations and to our Teachers Union. I do believe that this contract is an extremely strong contract and solid, and it will attract and retain, help us attract educators and retain educators. It is very centered on what is best for our employees and staff, and I do believe that we have come to a contract that I can say I'm very proud of. And so, I just want to say thank you. It was, although it took a while, I think we're in a really good place. And a special thank you to Anna, who was at every meeting, and to the team. And I just really thank you. I can't thank you enough, so just grateful. We have a one-page or highlight for you to read, it's there. And then, I also just, last time, the plaque was not here, but we have Anna's plaque. This is her last School Committee for this year as chair, and so, we just want to present this to Anna, an appreciation for your service and dedication as chair of the School Committee for 2024. Thank you. And that's all I have to say.
I just want to make a comment. I want to thank everyone. It's been a pleasure leading the School Committee this year. It's been, it's been great working as a team. We have a very good team, and I look forward to doing more and achieving more. I think we have a lot of goals to achieve, and I think that we will reach all of them. The contracts, it was my first time really being this involved in this contract negotiations. And I have to say that it was rough, it wasn't easy. And we had a lot of work that we had to do, but I think we really got to a place where I think that the union understood that we were truly giving everything we could. And I think we got to a really good compromise between both sides. And I think at the end, I think everyone was really happy with what we were able to sign off on. And I was very happy with the contract that we were able to accomplish. And I'm glad that we were able to give all that we did. So with that, I just wanted to say thank you to everyone, to my peers, to Dr. Abada, to all my colleagues that I worked with, that it was so interesting getting to know each and every single one of you. Monica, sorry to see you go. It was great working with you all these years. I had the pleasure of being with you the whole six and a half years that you were here. And I wish you so much luck from all of us in your new role, and I know your new chapter will be a bestseller. And with that, I'll hand it over to Maeda, she wanted to make a comment.
I just want to let you know that, I mean, as people are watching, we are working hard to make those sizes of the classrooms more, you know, smaller, but I know it takes time. We need more budget, so we are working to see if we can get more budget and kind of like we asking if you can come to the State House too, to ask for it and to let them know the needs that we have and that we really need more money so we can make those changes. And especially because, you know, the quality of education that we need for the students, you know, we have to do very high. And I know if we get more budget, we can make a difference. And we, as a team, are working, and we just want the best for our students and their team, everybody who's working, the staff. So I'm assuming that, I mean, this is only the beginning of, you know, this contract and that we were able to do it, but we're working, you know, to reduce the limit of the students in classroom because we know it has a lot. And I'm hoping we can make a difference next year and see what we can do by asking more money in the State House and see another strategies that we can do. Thank you, everybody, because this is my first year too, and it has been a pleasure for me to know every one of you and be part of this. I never thought I was going to be in this position, but I mean, I have been learning so much and I enjoy it, especially with the special education too. I have been learning so much over there, things that I didn't know before. So thank you for the opportunity that you have given me. Thank you.
And thank you, Fidel, for all your support. You have been a great help to us and a great support to us, and we can't thank you enough. From the School Committee, we extend our deepest thanks. And I know that we're going to do great things in Chelsea because Chelsea is small, but it's very big. And I want to wish everybody a very happy holiday season, and I hope to start the new year on a fresh foot and get so much more accomplished, and we will. So with that, I ask a motion to adjourn?
I second.
Meeting has adjourned.